Council, we'll call the meeting order for the record is February 7, 2023 at 4:32 PM. We will begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Administrator.
Here.
Councilman Overton, Councilwoman Perrow, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Borton, Councilman Hoagland, Mayor Simms.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Couple of things on our consent agenda before I make a motion. Item number 21 on your agenda should have the correct name on there, Stantik Consulting Services. And so that's what we're approving tonight, an item 21. And then item number 23, been asked to vacate this item per purchasing manager. So we're taking that one off the consent agenda. So, Mr. Mayor, with those changes, I move approval of the consent agenda. I'm sorry, I move adoption of the agenda as published and corrected.
I have a motion, a second is their discussion. If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, you guys have it, and the agenda is adopted as reflected by Council President Hoagland's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
For the consent agenda, I move approval of the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest the amended consent agenda.
I have a motion, a second, is there a discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name, you guys have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will go into item 28, which is community and development, Ada County Highway to Shift Integrated Five-Year Work Plan priorities. Well, this is, oh, there she is. I'll turn this over to Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Usually when I'm in the seat, I'm saying members of the commission or commissioners. So I apologize in advance if a muscle memory takes over. So I sent out the prioritization draft with the change that was requested at the previous meeting to move Black Cat up to project number 20. I'd also like to draw your attention to the description of that project. It has been expanded on, I updated that description. It previously said install railroad crossing. And I just made it more clear that we were looking for gated railroad crossing and an enhanced pedestrian crossing at Aviator, which is the street for these Compass Charter School. Also included in your packet is the crash data from police on accidents, pedestrian bike vehicle accidents within 2018 to 2022. I did not make any changes to the prioritization of the projects based on that information. But that information is shared for your reference as you decide what projects to move up and down. And at this point, I can stand for any comments or suggestions on projects that need to be moved.
Thank you. Council questions, comments for the feedback.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you, Miranda. I really appreciate your work on it and the police department's work on it. I guess, so for a couple of these, I see that you guys did some research and then kind of connected. For example, okay, we've had four crashes at Walmart. In the five-year work plan, there's a request to do a bikeway. It's number 50. The ones where there's no work plan request, was it that we did not identify any enhancements that we thought would have helped those incidents? Or is it that we're just not reflecting any requests at this time?
So at this time, there are no integrated fiber work plan requests. As far as identifying improvements that need to be made, that would be a much larger effort than we had the time for in the week that we had between getting this data, this preliminary data, and making any suggestions.
Okay, I'm Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, thank you, no, that makes sense. And I understand that there isn't a large timeframe, hasn't been a large timeframe to do that work. I guess my request would be that going forward, and I think, you know, with other work that's going on, we could integrate this in. But, you know, when we've kind of connected, okay, you know, you know, if we have a frequency of crash data at one location, then I think, especially if it's had a count of three or more, I would think it would be appropriate to hopefully find time, even if it's after we have to submit this to ACHD to work with police to, I read the reports and see, you know, is there a project that we can identify that we think would have helped with the pedestrian safety in this location? So I guess I'm just requesting kind of some follow-up so that this good work doesn't sort of fall through the, fall through the cracks. And even, I think it could be something good to share if we haven't already with the Transportation Commission as they do this work every year. So those are just a few thoughts that I wanted to get your thoughts on how we could use this data.
Councilwoman Schrader, if you might, I was going to suggest that this be part of the work group that's being done with the school in these, you know, because if you look at it, one of the areas where we have the most crash data is an area where there's like several intersections right there at Main Cherry and Meridian. So they would be evaluating that area, but what the crash data also doesn't say is what happened? Yeah, but was, was this someone coming out of, I'm, I'm going to guess at the main cherry, there's one or two of those people coming out of the parking lot and someone walking across where the cars are entering in that area. Don't know for a fact, but I'm going to guess that that's what you're going to see. It's not necessarily a someone trying to cross and an issue of crossing even necessarily in that standpoint. But they can look at that, they can pull the reports, just like you suggest, as they're looking at each of these areas to see what was, you know, what occurred in that area, because it is right now just a dot on the map as we know.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what we share.
Thank you, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. If we could do that going forward, hopefully we could, you know, fold this into that work. I'd be really excited for us to do that and try to leverage the data. So I appreciate you saying that, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one Pearl.
I have a couple of questions for Miranda, and then I'd like to make three suggestions to move some of these within the top 25. And however you want to go through those, I'll leave that up to you. First question I have is number 19. Miranda had stated that there's not a currently a project on this list to widen Amity from Meridian Road to Locust Grove. But when there does become one, the city would like to make sure that there's pedestrian and bike facilities included. Am I appropriately stating that?
Yes.
So I would propose that that not be, if they don't currently have a project on this list, that we not put it in, in an area where we'll get, where they're giving points for this year.
Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question, at least a comment directly towards Miranda. And I think particularly number 19 specifically, I think the reason that we want it on the list is to keep it on the radar of the, of the highway district. So it's not about necessarily funding for this year, it's about keeping it on their radar for funding and part of their integrated five-year work plan for years to come. I think a good example is improvements that we're seeing at Locust Grove and Victory right now. We're in a similar spot two years ago. We moved it up to get it to the place that the highway district paid attention to it. And then they then moved it into their five-year work plan and construction has, has commenced. So I, I hear where you're coming from on this, and I, I really appreciate the philosophy. It's a little bit of, this is kind of the rules of engagement when it comes to the highway district. And so I'd, particularly for 19, I'd, I'd be reluctant for us to move that down this year. Certainly next year, if it makes it under their five-year work plan, we could maybe move the numbers then. But I'd like to see 19 kind of stay where it is personally.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Thank you, I appreciate Councilman Cavanagh's points on that. I, I, I think there are other priorities that are possibly more likely to get funding sooner. So maybe I'm just not understanding how, how they're going to, you know, give points to these. And, and in that, in that same line of thinking, Miranda had stated last time that they will weigh some of the priorities from the school district in addition to what the city is prioritized. So I would propose that we move number 11 through 13 up to above eight or nine. I understand that eight and nine are already in the CIP and that they possibly won't be moved, but they have not been designed yet. So I don't know if, I realize that the green ones are already in, you know, in, in ACHD's priority list, but they haven't been designed yet for another couple of years. And I personally believe that 11 through 13 are a higher priority for us. That's just something I want to propose.
Comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I guess I, I'd like to hear some feedback on if, you know, if it's in the programming design phase, how does, how do we impact that, or do we impact that at all by kind of reprioritizing? Anything that's already in design, I don't really want to move off if it's going to set something back just because we know it takes so long to get, to get funding and design for any of these projects. But I mean, one thing I could see us doing would be maybe, you know, not to like pit them up against each other, but an example might be 10 Mile and Cherry. If that's not in design, I think a better conversation might be, how does 11 compare to, you know, 13 and 14? Or, or something like that. But I just, I'm a little hesitant to try to move something out of the top 10 if it's already in design and getting funding, just because it takes so long to design. And that's just some feedback.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one Pearl.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It, just for clarification, Miranda, if, if it's not, none of the one, none of, of the projects in seven, eight or nine are in design yet, they don't start till 2025. So what does that mean? They haven't committed any funds yet? Or like, I'm under the assumption that it's still movable if it's not, if it's not in design till 2025?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that is a decision that ACHD makes when they set their budget. So at the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan that they approved, when they sent us this list that was already programmed, how they decide to move things out of programming and move other projects in, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have any answer for that.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one Pearl.
If I understand this correctly, we, we should be taking their programming into consideration, but this is really about Meridian's priority list. And this is what we're communicating to the public is our priority. And I feel like that's a little bit more important than us trying to guess what ACH is going to do, ACHD is going to do with, with their five-year integrated program. So that's kind of, that's where I'm coming from with it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland. Yes, it is our priority list, and that's why I'd kind of like to keep them there, even though they don't have any dates by them yet. It goes back to Councilman Cavanagh's point about you get them there, these are our priorities, and this is what we want to see. And now they have to work on that and decide, okay, how can they make that happen to our wishes? And that's, that's why they asked for this input. So to change that and just do it for things that are funding, I think is less, it, it, it takes away the criticalness that we see as a council and community for the top projects that we want to have funded.
Mr. Mayor, just maybe some added context. I think what Miranda is saying is that oftentimes, like, let's take, for instance, number nine, Victory, Meridian Road to Locust Grove, it says in there that it's designed at 20, at 2025. Because of our placement, it very well could come back next year based on discussions, the highway district, maybe it's going to be designed in 2024. Based on our priority list, the highway district oftentimes will move the program years around based on our priorities. So by, by leaving some of these things where we, they are, even if they are showing as so far out into the future, because we've placed a higher priority on them in the past, the highway district has accelerated their calendar to meet some of our needs. So again, I kind of tend to agree with Councilmember Hoagland on kind of leaving the list as it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding that McMillan is not a higher priority than the widening Locust Grove between Amity and Victory, Victory between Meridian and Locust Grove, which is not a very busy area. I just, I guess I'm trying to understand, like, is there agreement from a transportation standpoint that, and depending on what we're looking, are we looking at safety? Are we looking at traffic count? Are we looking at, what, what is the, what is the priority that we're, that we're discussing? If we're discussing traffic count, my guess is that 11 through 13 have a higher count than the other, but I'm not a traffic specialist. So if we're discussing safety, McMillan has a bit major safety problem. So I, I guess, I mean, I don't know, I, I'm looking at the map here, and if it looks at those, if I look at those in relationship to schools, you know, all of, all of them are somewhat close to schools. But I guess, I guess I just want to understand, and forgive me if I'm speaking out of ignorance with this, but I just want to understand, what is it about seven, eight and nine that are taking priority over? What, what is the, what's the purpose from Meridian's standpoint? Is this, is this transport, is it because the Transportation Committee recommended it? Is it, like, is there something else that I'm not seeing? That I should know about it?
Councilwoman Schrader. Councilwoman Schrader.
Uh, Councilwoman Pearl, I think the context that may be missing, and as someone who is a huge advocate for McMillan, this is going to sound surprising coming from me, but the whole thought process, I think in the last few years, was to do the whole corridor of Locust Grove in a, in a relatively compressed timeframe. The Transportation Commission's feedback has always been, if we just do parts of a whole corridor, we're not going to move the needle on the traffic issues. If we treat the corridor at once, which you can see in the prioritization, that Locust Grove is in almost all of these projects, that was the reasoning that I recall last year and the year before behind that was to try to do that whole corridor at once. I think McMillan is a huge priority. I just don't want to upset the apple cart on a series of like 10 projects that they seem to have in the queue. I'd, I'd be more of a fan of, you know, if there are a couple of these, like 10 Mile and Cherry or Eagle and Overland, we could have a discussion about, you know, McMillan versus those, I think is a better discussion. But I, I don't want to upset the whole court, the whole Locust Grove corridor, just because, unless the thinking of everyone has changed. But that definitely was the feedback that I remember all of us coalescing around.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, um, just leave that one for now. I, I'm just one person, I'm not in agreement that Locust Grove is as high of a priority, but like you said, it's too complicated to move on the list. So this, I had the same question about 21 through 23. I appreciate the parks looking forward to that section, but we don't have, we don't have funding in place, to my knowledge, for Cherry Park yet. And so I, having those in the top 25, I think there's other possible projects that might be better placed.
Just on the park, I mean, it is in, it is planned in the CFP, but it's also been planned for 20 years, you know, as the next park. But I think that with the timing of the sewer, it is more viewed as likely in this timeframe. So, but just so you know, it is the next major thing on Park's radar to accomplish.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilmember Pearl, do you have a recommendation as to what you would want to move up over 21, 22 and 23?
Quick question before I answer that for Miranda.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Thank you, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Numbers 24 through 29, where they say defer, that's ACHD's deferment that, in other words, they're saying this is operating appropriately and we don't need that in, we are not prioritizing that at all? Or we're, we would prioritize this less than, is, is that their way of saying we would put this at the bottom?
I wouldn't speak for them, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I wouldn't speak for them to say it's at the bottom, but I will say deferring the improvement is, it's not in their Integrated Five-Year Work Plan right now. It's being deferred until the level of service, which is the performance rating that they use, is until it's not operating where it needs to be. And right now, as from when they wrote these notes, traffic counts, it was operating where it needed to be. I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
It does, thank you. And the reason I ask that is because of number 28 and 29. I would think that we, I would like to see those moved up because the school is there and because it's, it's already in the, in the CIP. So I'm not sure, I guess, why, why that's ranked lower than many of the other projects that are also in the CIP that, that are higher priority for ACHD. Does that make sense?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hood.
Maybe hopefully add a little bit of value and maybe a recommendation. I think this is a good maybe subtopic for your joint meeting with ACHD in a couple of weeks, too. Councilman Pearl, you even brought up, you know, different people look at things with different importance. What you see here and why ACHD is deferring these projects is the level of service primarily, not safety, not cost. What you see here and why ACHD is deferring these projects is the level of service primarily, not safety, not cost, just that it's functioning okay from whatever lens they're looking at that through. So I think that's something if council wants to, you could have a better understanding from ACHD of all the things that go into their considerations when they scope a project and they go, we're deferring this for now. It's not as simple as just level of service, by the way. But I think having an understanding that they do look at safety and they do look at cost, they do look at right-of-way impacts, they look at all of those things and go, right now, this isn't the time. There are other things that score higher on the priority list, um, just to better understand how they factor in things. We don't have to do it that way, right? This list is a little more, can be, if you choose it to be, a little more political. This can be, hey, we're factoring in things that aren't as black and white as cost or right-of-way impacts or whatever those things are. So, so we could potentially reach out to ACHD and do a little bit of, if, if that's what council wants to do, spend a few minutes at the joint meeting upcoming to get a little bit better understanding. And then maybe even advocate for, because I know it's been a hot topic recently, pedestrian safety. And say, we think that should be moved up on your hierarchy of things to consider when you scope a project and decide if it should be deferred or not. Traffic may be moving fine, but if there's a bunch of crashes with pedestrians, isn't that more important than traffic moving fine? So anyways, just, um, some of your questions are very complex. There's, there's a lot that goes into this, both at the city standpoint and from a technical review side that our Transportation Commission does. We can give you that information. You asked a question earlier. We can give you the information that goes into how this list came about and the level of service they're looking at and the crash data and those types of things. And you guys are already talking about some of that. From my perspective, historically, again, some of this is, is you looking at a higher level, not getting into the weeds so much with the engineers and, and that, but really just saying, hey, I know of this school and I know parents that have called me or emailed me and said, this is a concern. I want to move this up. You know, it's not based on data necessarily. So, but, but ACHD's is, they've got to, they've got to play, you know, fairly with all the cities and some of their analysis. So they do have a pretty rigid scorecard when they look at these things and go, okay, there's capacity in that roadway, we aren't rebuilding it. Don't care about crashes as much, there's capacity. I'm oversimplifying that, but, um, anyways, just, just again, saying we, we could potentially work with, um, ACHD if there's room on that agenda, Mayor, and maybe get a 10 or 15-minute thing on just their, their programming and everything that goes in. And then how we can do a better job of providing some of that insight into the Highway District that really does, um, I can't remember if it was Councilman Hoglen or a cou- couple of them. You know, this is our, this is our priority list, sort of absent all the ACHD stuff that they have to look at to do it, right? This is Meridian's priorities based on what we know and understand. How can we help that at ACHD?
Caleb, I like your suggestion, even just the, how, how they view it and score it. So council and the commission would have that for next year. I do think there is room personally, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
I agree 100%. Caleb, I think it's a great suggestion. Um, part of the value of this process, your comment about keeping it at a high level is an important one. This, this priority ranking has some slow inertia to it year over year as we look at it and things purposely don't move wildly up and down. I also appreciate the process. I think process is key as to how it's created and maintained. For the work of the Transportation Commission and our staff, the granular detail you've talked about, for me, weighs very heavily in support of the recommendations presented. Also, the reality that, you know, things above 20 are somewhat academic, whether it's 30 versus 35 or 28. All of that, for me, goes into supporting the recommendation of the commission. It is the dialogue you've described would be extremely valuable to help understand how this moves and doesn't move year over year.
Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Caleb. None of these get on this list without being in discussions for many, many years. I would hate to see us move anything that's already on the programmed list or something that we think is important right now. Why they got on the list to begin with years ago. Not be in favor of taking anything off the programmed list as it sits. But again, I think we need a bigger explanation down the road on exactly how they get to be there, how long it takes, how that points to work for all of us to make it more clear. Big process with a lot of moving.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, Councilman Overton. I, you know, this is, this is a list that is reflecting the city's priorities. And if I'm a resident, I, I'm asking the same, I mean, I'm, I'm not playing devil's advocate. I'm truly asking questions that I want to know the answer to. But also, if, if I'm trying to understand all the moving parts and all the things as we are making this decision, then members of the public are going to ask the same questions. So I think it's good for us to have, to have, you know, as we've had this discussion last, at the January meeting and now, uh, I wouldn't have any idea why Meridian has these in the order that they have them if I'm a resident. And so, um, you know, I think that's, it's, it's really good for us to discuss this on the dais and, and for there to be clarity for us as a team to all be on the same page about how the decisions are made and, and not sort of give the response of, um, I understand that there's a process, I understand it's a multi-year process. I understand not moving things to, to not taking place markers out that we've been working on for a long time. But I also want to make sure that we are appropriately reflecting our priorities and that it's not just left in the place that it's left in because we think, um, it, it will get, how do I say this? That we kind of go, you know, yeah, that, that needs to be done too. Yes, these, this is all, this is, this is tough, right? There's, all of these have merit. I just want clarity for our public as to why we're choosing one or the other. And to only have 20, maybe 25 to get to prioritize, that's tough.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
We, Caleb, we've seen, Miranda, um, we've, we've seen in prior years, the ACHD, right? This is a piece of their bigger puzzle and their bigger puzzle shows the objective matrix, right? The cost and the level of service and the, uh, trying to compile projects together and that, that list of factors were one little piece of it. That's something that even if it's the prior one, that you can send around to us again, that at least shows us the measurements that they are looking at to Councilwoman Pearl's question.
Mr. Mayor, council members, that is something I can send out. I will say as far as timeline, that this list is required back to ACHD by February 15th. They did update their methodology from the prior methodology. So I can definitely send out the presentation of what their new methodology for scoring is when they scope these projects, those projects then receive a score. And then that score is one piece of the programming. So then the programming looks at grouping projects and, um, doing things based on funds. But I can send you the information I have on their scoring for the scope. And then we can ask them, as Caleb said, to speak on their actual programming process.
Mr. Mayor. I can take that just a step further. And then if we want to, after the joint meeting, after we get you their current scoring, hear from them at the joint meeting. And then if council wants to say, well, we, now we understand better how ACHD does their process. Transportation Commission, next year when you do this, will you please make this, you know, ACHD does what they do with their points, but we value safety. Don't look at level of service as much, put more weight or value in. When you send us your, our list, this is the hierarchy of things to consider for us. We, we could do that, right? I mean, again, ACHD's still going to have their spreadsheet with all, all the other things. But if we say, you know, number one concern is stop controlled intersections, there are elementary schools, we want to see those signalized. The expectation is those are the top few and the, we can do that, right? Now, ACHD factors that in, they're big, to Councilman Borton's, uh, point, you know, it scores about this much. Our, 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 you know, yeah, 15% of the overall score of a project, which doesn't usually move the needle too terribly much on something. You still got to have the technical merits to warrant them investing millions of dollars. But if we want to say this is more important, you aren't giving them enough points in our, our priorities to the public's question. How is, how come this one's a higher priority than that one? We could at least explain it, hey, this, there's crashes here near elementary schools and we don't like that idea.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
It seems like, um, there is a good opportunity in the community programs list as well. Right? Because that's kind of a different, they're aligned, but it's a little bit of a different bucket. And I would say it does make sense to look at, you know, is there, for example, are there, i- is it appropriate to have a change in those priorities, you know, related to Oahu High School? As just one example, or, you know, there are a couple of others that, you know, we could certainly discuss. I guess my, my question for Councilwoman Pearl would be, you know, are there any particular projects or any feedback that was specific to a school site that you think would be better reflected on the community programs list prioritization as opposed to the wider corridor rate? Like if we widen the road, we're going to do the pedestrian facilities, it's all going to be wrapped in together, so it's going to get done. But if it's in the top, I assume it's similar that if it's in the top ranking of community programs, that it's programmed, it's designed, it's going to get funded. So that might be another, if you have a particular concern, that might be another way to tackle it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader. Um, not other than the concern that we have, have discussed with, uh, Compass at Black Cat and then, and then clearly McMillan. And, and, you know, some of the sidewalks for McMillan are in the community programs, but it, I, I agree that there doesn't necessarily seem to be a prioritization link between the two lists, so. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah. And so I think, like, that, that's a good example where maybe we, we want to diverge a little bit because of the logistical challenges with the canal seems to make it very difficult for ACHD to prioritize widening McMillan. And that's just a physical reality. I'm assuming that is a cost component for them. And so they've continuously said to us, that's not happening until like the 2030s. So maybe that's where there is an opportunity and we should take a look at the community programs in McMillan that touch McMillan and where they're listed here and see if moving them in priority makes more sense. If we think that those, if we, if we unfortunately think McMillan's not going to be widened for a long time because of the reality of the canal, if we just face that fact, we could keep it, it is still a priority, we think they should do it. But maybe those, some of those community programs get accelerated up a little bit. So that's maybe one thing to look at. And then I guess the other, the other piece would be, you know, with Oahu High School, I think that it just seems like a reality that that should be better prioritized, uh, within community programs. But, you know, I, I guess a que- a question I have is, unless there are specific changes identified now, does it make sense to have our joint meeting and then we can give them feedback where you want to tweak it? Or do we just have to submit it by the deadline? It is what it is, live with it.
Mr. Mayor. So to answer that question, we, we need to commit the list to be submitted to ACHD by February 15th to be scored in the scoping process. But there is an opportunity after they program their requests to comment on the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan draft. So then if there is any drastic changes that the city saw needed at that point, I would see that as council's opportunity to comment on the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan draft before it's adopted by commission.
Mr. Mayor, can I put a, maybe another finer pointer and, uh, opportunity there as well? I think we could follow up as staff in, in the meantime, because Miranda's right, the 15th is a pretty hard deadline. We, we don't want to miss that, we want whatever we send, unless we're just not comfortable sending this, we can't wait longer. But we can in the coming weeks after that, follow up with their staff and say, hey, you know what, since we sent you that list, we're really hoping this project maybe is even higher. You know, if we get some of that feedback from council after the joint meeting, we can supplement some of that. The initial draft, Miranda's right, we'll bring that back to you, say, hey, this is where these, this is how it's kind of shaking out, do we want to? But I'll be honest, that is pretty late in the game, too. And they usually don't make drastic changes. So if we're looking at, we're going to have these focus areas, for lack of a better term, right now, Oahu High School. And we're going to look at McMillan maybe a little differently than when we do the rest of the corridor, even our community programs list as a whole. We can follow up with their staff, kind of, you know, o- off the record, if you will, or, or after the fact and just say, hey, as you're doing this, maybe, maybe, maybe flip-flop these a little bit or, or, you know, something to that effect. So I'll just offer that as well, that if something comes up the next couple of months, we can, we can supplement whatever list we send this week, uh, to them with some of those, that follow-up. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Understanding that we've got our deadline and we have to submit this, there's nothing that says that we have to wait till next year to do this again. We can start next week working on what this list is going to look like next year and start reevaluating our priorities now for how we want this list to look the next time we submit it. And will we have the new meetings we're going to have on intersection-related safety and how we're going to view that as well as our joint meetings coming up? I think those are perfect opportunities for us to start now looking at what we're going to do next year. And we see this, there's not going to be huge change other than what we decide to do. It's a moving list. Take that opportunity with Miranda and Caleb's help, start immediately putting that together. I think we can start making bigger impacts next year instead of being in a position where in now where 23rd hour trying to decide what we want to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
I do think there'll be impacts like Oahu High School is having. If you go two years before that high school was approved and look at the list it brought, was probably a little different than what you see now. And we've had, had growth. When Highway 16 opens, that's going to change the dynamics quite a bit. And, and we know our traffic is impacted by a lot of people who don't live in Meridian, coming through Meridian, going to their destinations. When Linda Road Overpass opens down the road here, a ways, that will have an impact that will influence this list. So it's always going to morph, I guess, is the word I can use, is it's going to be morphing as other things come into play and factor in. So I just, uh, we'll give it our best shot and, and hit those areas that we think need to be done. And maybe we will have a couple of things that move up and down a little more quickly than, than they typically do. But we definitely know what these priorities, which have been put into place over time and input by a lot of people. And so we just have to keep that ball moving forward and know how the rules work so we can be in the ballgame on that.
Thank you. And, you know, my, my hope and I, I'm crossing my fingers and toes, but I, I'm thinking that our number one project is actually going to be what gets funded and put into the program. You know, it's currently not in, in the program. So if our number one project gets in, pretty much nothing else is moving. You know, you, we may see something else a little bit, but that's an expensive project. That's a challenge for ACHD to program that. So if we're lucky, our number one moves forward. Everything else, it's good to have, but it's likely not going to see a lot of movement or a lot of change unless they're just trying, they have something that's so cost-effective to balance that it might get programmed otherwise, but that's what I'm hopeful outcome of this process, uh, when we see what they put into the five-year work plan.
Councilman Borton.
Is this, uh, is this list something to move and adopt today or is it a resolution next week?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, it looked like, um, Mr. Mayor had something to say. I don't have a, um, resolution to adopt. They do ask, ACHD does ask that elected officials vote. So I do ask for, um, a movement to adopt this list. And then we will submit a letter with the mayor's signature uh, as a cover letter that just kind of explains our priorities here and, uh, submit that to ACHD next week.
I was going to say the same thing, they don't require a resolution, so I think it is just.
With that, do I have a direction the council would like to officially take?
Yes, Mr. Mayor was going to ask is if, uh, do we want to do that tonight or did you want to wait? I, 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 my preference is just to take care of it now. I think we're, hash this out for this year of what we want so we could move it forward and let staff get the letter prepared and signed and off to ACHD, so.
That would be my preference. That would be my preference personally.
Councilman Kever.
Then I'd move that we adopt the 2023 ACHD roadway priorities and community program priorities as presented from the, the planning. Excuse me, from the planning department. Second.
I have a motion, a second, is there discussion? If not, I'm favoring the same by saying I. Opposed, they, let's have it. And we will transmit this draft priorities to ACHD. And we will get more information, have the work group that will help evaluate and make determinations. And also Mr. Hood, Miranda, Councilman Borton had a good idea. As we move into this next year, it might be good to bring the chair of the Transportation Commission or the subcommittee, the chair who, you know, works on this next time it comes before council to help answer some of these questions. So they have that, I know you do it, but sometimes it's also good to have them say it directly.
Will do.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 29, which, which will be an update to the standard operating, standard operating policy and procedure 4.1 holidays that Mr. Nary is going to present.
Members of the council, so what I have before you is a change to the holiday policy and how it's been applied. So little backstory, so we've had the same holiday policy in place for a long time. I probably wrote it. I don't even remember, it was that long ago. So we had a fairly static policy of, these are the holidays we have, these are the holidays we recognize, these are days off. Few times a year, we have a glitch there. We have a Friday holiday. We have a midweek holiday for Veterans Day. So we have varying work schedules by varying work groups for operational reasons. So we have four 10s, we have nine eights, we have shift work, we have a variety of different ones. So most people have programmed their lives to deal with Monday holidays. That has never really been problematic to anybody. And many of our work schedules that are varied incorporated into that and deal with that. Some people don't get those holidays off anyway. They don't get those days. The CLA deals with those separately for the fire department. The people that have to work on the holiday because we have to have people in the police cars, we have to have people on call, we have to have people available on certain days, have to work and they get paid for it. So that's how we've handled it. Back in 2011, our controller at the time, Rita Cunningham, crafted an email that I am 100% certain she consulted with me on it and I don't remember, it was 12 years ago. So what that allowed is because we had a few limited people that worked in positions that weren't critical to working on the holiday day itself, would want it to shift their holiday. So they weren't in emergency services, they weren't in a fire, they weren't in on-call, they weren't treatment plant workers. They were folks that just happened their work schedule where Friday was their normal holiday or their normal off day. So they asked, in those limited circumstances, if the director could allow them to basically take their holiday on Thursday instead of Friday, and then they're off on Friday. Financially, this is how we handle it from the city's end. They worked 10 hours on Monday, 10 hours on Tuesday, 10 hours on Wednesday, they get a holiday and they, that's it. They get paid for 30 hours of work and 10 hours of holiday. So that's been going on for 12 years in some departments. We discovered that and, and we had the conversation with the departments to figure out, why are we doing this? And they had been referring to this as a Rita rule, and I don't know if Councilmember Overton remembers this for reference, but that's the Rita rule that they've been applying in some departments for the last 12 years to allow that. Here's the benefit to the city. If we don't do that, one, it, 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 two things. It makes people feel good. It makes them feel like they got a holiday, that their day off wasn't just their day off anyway. So everybody else got the day off too. So that was one, one reason I think the question came up to begin with. Secondarily, if we didn't do that, then this is the way that we get paid. 10 hours for Monday, 10 hours for Tuesday, 10 hours for Wednesday. They don't take, they, they don't take 10 hours on, on Thursday, so they work Thursday. They get paid 10 extra hours on Friday because they get paid for their holiday anyway. So you get 50 hours of pay that week, all of it straight time, there's no overtime for that, but you get paid actually more. No one, to our knowledge, has gamed the system to do that. Most people later want the holiday or they don't care. And so it hasn't been an issue. It is occasionally people that, and it only normally is going to apply primarily to a non-exempt employees, so hourly employees. With the, with the people that are already exempt, it really doesn't make a lot of difference. They get paid the same no matter whether they had the day off or they don't have the day off. It doesn't really make any difference. So anyway, we had a conversation and basically as we looked at the policy and the procedure, the discussion amongst their directors was they felt it was more appropriate to allow the departments to have that level of flexibility for those minimal amount of employees that this impacts, to allow them to have the holiday on a different day that same week. It has to be within the work week. It can't be flexed out to another day. It has to be within that work week, but managing it based on operational need is what they did. And one of the things that we put in there, and we actually got a little bit of question back, was on the procedure page under, under Roman numeral two, it says Department Director Approval. It's probably one of the few places in there that we didn't include designee. And we didn't do that for a specific reason. What we didn't want is this supervisor says, okay, that supervisor says no. That one says yes, you have, however many shifts the police department has, and they say, you can, you can, you can. And then it's completely disjointed and nobody wanted to do that. Finance didn't want to do it, tracking it on a time card, nobody wanted to do it that way. So it's like, okay, the department director has to say, yes, they can for a discretionary reason like, again, and again, primarily this affects people that are in non-emergency positions. So you don't get, you know, again, police officers get paid on holidays, firefighters get paid on holidays, they just get paid, it's just part of the job, they get it. I don't recall we've ever had pushback for people in those positions saying, oh, I should get my holiday. They got paid for it. They had to work. That's the job they have. So that's never been an issue. So that's what we're proposing to you. As you note here, you know, this is one of the procedures that when we went through this rewrite a year, was it a year? Was it two? Maybe a year. Yeah, a year ago that this was one that the council asked specifically, hey, if you want to change it, come back and ask you. So that's why we're here. We'd like to change it and I'll, I'll stand for any questions.
And sir, if I could add, it was written in a way to allow this, but when we did the rewrite, it got written in a way not to allow it. And you know, my direction to those, you know, I'm, I think policy is a good thing. I'm like, no, if we either need to get this policy changed or we're not going to have the practice. Right? So.
So to follow up, Mr. Mayor, part of the reason we're here now is we have a holiday this month. So the, the finance asked, if, if we're going to do this, can we get this done in front of the holiday? So we don't run into this again with this people now having previously been now allowed to do it, now not allowed to do it. And then causing that sort of heartburn for a few people. Any other questions?
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. Just one quick question under holiday and leave status. Six B, just want to understand the thinking behind not providing holiday pay if there's an unpaid leave day before or after the holiday.
Oh, great question, Councilwoman Perro. So Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that was one, I, I do specifically recall that. And it was to, again, not incentivize those weekends. If you wanted to take vacation, you can take vacation, but what they didn't want is people building on that. We've had, we've had situations over the years where employees have tried to take advantage of those situations, call in sick before holidays, you know, take a vacation just so they could have a longer time period with a free one in the middle of it. So that was the whole intent was just to make sure people understood, holiday was a holiday, it's just a day and you get it. And, and really the conversation primarily over the years has been, is a holiday a benefit? Or is a holiday a, 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 a way to make sure your check remains whole? And I don't know that we've answered the question very well either way. I mean, it does feel like a benefit, but again, you don't get paid for it. I mean, if you were to leave and you didn't take your holiday, you don't get paid for it. So it isn't a benefit in that sense, like, like, like leave time is.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
So if there, if there truly was a situation where, where an employee took unpaid leave for a legitimate reason, but they would have been able to return to work on the holiday, but the city hall is closed, let's say, for example, is that person just lose another day of, of pay?
No, they would get paid for the holiday. They would get paid anyway for the holiday because we, we do have to pay them for that. It was again, trying to avoid a system where people were trying to take advantage of the time off they were having, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Shater.
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask a question. Many workplaces now have a concept of a floating holiday. And I, I think there's a lot of merit to that. Is there anything that would prohibit an employee from, for just asking for Department Director Approval as an accommodation to substitute holidays? For example, if we have an employee that doesn't celebrate one of these holidays and has another holiday that they don't normally get off, would they be able to ask their director for approval to take a different day off instead?
Mr. Members of the council, Councilmember Shater, that's a great question. That's never come up that I'm aware of. I think that's a great thing we should explore because we are trying to be a more inclusive workplace. And you're right, not everybody celebrates these exact holidays. You know, we did delete prior to my coming, the Columbus Day Holiday, which is not frowned upon anyway. But also we use that to, to allow for a holiday for the day after Thanksgiving. But you're right, yeah, we have never talked about that. Floating holidays can sometimes be difficult to manage. From a management standpoint, we've done it very rarely. We did it the year we recognized Juneteenth because it was done so quickly that we allowed that one to be a floater for some people. But I think we, we can certainly begin that conversation about, is that something we could consider? Because you're right, you know, the, 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 the question always becomes problematic because someone will say, well, I would work because I don't celebrate Christmas. We're closed, so there's nothing for you to do anyway. So I, you know, I, I think that's going to probably go back to the same conversation again, is this paycheck? Is this way, a way to retain your paycheck or is this ready to give you a benefit of, of recognition? I don't think I have an answer today.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one of the share.
Yeah, I always suggest this is a future topic to explore. Certainly, I think you'd have to have a lot of limitations around it. Where I've seen it be successful in workplaces is usually when it's limited to one or two or like a director, like exception. But that being said, I think there's a lot of merit to looking at that. You know, and, and there are some, there are some roles where I think work could be accomplished, even if the office is closed, depending on whether someone's a remote worker or what have you. Certainly in some cases it's not possible, but in some cases it might be. So I don't know. I mean, maybe a, maybe a floating holiday citywide or something that would allow people to celebrate other holidays would make sense. It's just a suggestion. It's just prompted the thought in my mind, reading the policy.
We've, we've come a long way from when I first got here that the holiday practice prior to my coming in this position in '04 was if you had a 10-hour shift, which some of our employees did, not just public safety people, but some other types of, of people. If you wanted to take the holiday and the city hall is closed, then you, definitely free to do to come to work, but you had a 10-hour shift, they would give you eight hours of holiday and take two hours of your vacation. And you couldn't come to work anyway. That never made sense to me. It didn't make sense to Mayor Tammy and we changed it because your day is whatever your day is, whatever your schedule is, is what it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, Councilman Overton.
Jerry, I, I do remember that memo by Rita. I also remember when we used to have all of our holidays banked. It's them as a rotating vacation time of 80 hours while we have fewer holidays back then. We have more, but that was, I think, one of the reasons that that was eliminated had to do with staffing issues. Because now we were filing on not only a better system of giving our employees more vacation. Once we went to the system we have now that we had a lot more holiday time and you banked two years for, we went away from banking that two plus holiday. Because it did become a staffing, especially in police services, trying to keep enough groups on the road. I don't know again, if that's something that wants to be discussed. Issue if you start floating holiday on different parts of the city on staff. Captain Coliani to say what he's got now on, on staffing at the police department, what kind of effect it could have on them.
And, and I will add to that, Councilman Overton, the, you know, in the CLA for the fire union employees, it is a banked system. Because they have to work whether it's a holiday or not, it doesn't make any difference. They, they change their schedule slightly on holidays and they, they operate a little bit different functionally, but they have to be there. So they just get it as a bank and they just use it as part of their bank, like that old system the city used.
Captain.
I'm not sure if I want to throw another log on this fire. Since I've been here since 1996, it's been done a ton of ways. We used to, you were just given eight, 10 holidays a year in October and you used them whenever you wanted to. At your discretion. You didn't use them and you left the city, you didn't get paid for them. We used to do it that way. We used to have a system where it didn't matter if you worked 10, 12-hour shifts, you only got eight hours of holiday. We, we moved through that and then we moved into this, this format now. And it's, it's weird because holidays are moved by the city. So Christmas is on a Sunday. We move the holiday to a Monday. So the people that are working Christmas get the same amount of straight time as the people that get the holiday, but they're actually working the holiday. So there's, there's that. I'm working the holiday, I'm working Christmas, I'm not with my family. And the person that works Monday where the holidays move to gets the same amount of pay. They don't feel it's equitable. So there's that issue. And then there's the issue that Councilwoman Strater brought up, or excuse me, Councilwoman Perro brought up about if you're sick or take vacation through no fault of your own, you have something planned, how does that compute when it comes down to calculating hours? Because we have some people that are sick, you know, they lose it. Where does that, there's, there's just a lot of layers to it on how we do it. But floating, but we used to just get a bank of them. This is it, we'll use it as you see.
Councilwoman Shater.
Yeah, I definitely wasn't recommending a whole bank of floating holidays. Where I've seen it be successful is it's typically limited to one or two. And sometimes as a religious accommodation, but not necessarily. So that, that would be the thing I would already to look into, not necessarily a wholesale change in, in moving to banking completely. I think that'd be a big change. That would be hard to implement and manage citywide.
I would agree. And one more thing I can add, Mr. Mayor, as the council, this is back to Councilwoman Perro's question. We were having a problem for a period of time with some employees that didn't feel the necessity that they had to work 40 hours a week. They could afford to go with unpaid time. And so for a while, we required to be a full-time employee, you had to schedule 40 hours a week. This particular language here was also to address that, so that you didn't have people saying, I don't care if you pay me. I'll take the day off. You don't have to pay me, it's fine. And then, and they're not using vacation, they're not using sick leave. We're using unpaid time that they chose to use. And when I was the HR director, I, I don't know how many times I said to the department, just tell them no. And some people were better at that than others and some had work groups, I wasn't my, it wasn't my person. So I don't know what their personalities were, but I think it's one of those things that we, we've tried to address this as fairly as we can. We tried to do this particular one. Like I said, I think that it was great intention because again, I think people just felt like I, I felt like I lost something. Even if I get paid an extra 10 hours, I don't feel like I got the day off like everybody else did. And so I think it was a way to address that. And then when we looked at it from the math standpoint, financially, it actually cost us less to do that, that it would be to just pay them extra. So our intention was if, if the council's in favor of it, I will put a resolution on for next week for approval so that we're in front of the next holiday. And then we'll just go from there. And I think, at least from the director team, I think generally they were in favor of it because again, it gives the level of flexibility when it's necessary and it doesn't, like I said, it, the ones that it probably comes up the most often are the employees who normal scheduled off day is a Friday and the Friday is the holiday. Or it's a weird day because it's a Tuesday or a Wednesday or a Thursday, which would have been their normal off day depending on what shifts they work.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kever.
Bill, you, you touched on a couple of times, you know, kind of the conversations with the director team, which I think is an appropriate place for this conversation to also emerge. Do you, does the city have a employee engagement group that these can also be shared with? Recognizing that the perspective of a director may be different than an individual employee. And I think we all, when these questions come, is we're also trying to see it from both, you know, management as well as, as rank and file. And I don't know if that's something that has ever been explored to seek that perspective or how, how we make sure that these changes are also in line with what our employees are looking for. Um, or how how we make sure that these changes are also in line with what our employees are looking for.
So yeah, Mr. Members of the council, have a great, great question. And we know we don't have an employee group like that. In these talk about very much. So, you know, when we created the revised the policy manual last year, we did create a process and the process does require how it gets initiated, who has to vet it before it comes to you folks to look at. Um, so we have built that in. We don't really, I mean, we have a benefits committee, which is probably one of the our broadest based committees of varieties of work groups. But they talk primarily about benefits and not about this particular particular type of policy. You know, we have a compensation committee. It's a little bit smaller and it's a little bit more management driven and it really drills onto compensation and not necessarily other things. So I, yeah, we hadn't ever explored that. Certainly, I don't have a not a problem with that. I don't think that's a bad thing to consider how we would do it. You know, whether or not, again, we expand the benefits committee because it already exists to looking at stuff like that too and getting away because there is most workers represented. I mean, we have police, parks, public works, legal, HR, finance, all a part of that. So that might be a way to just do that to make sure, like you said, if there's something else that we just are missing. Uh, we hope, again, most of the directors have vetted it somewhere in their department to get a sense of what makes sense for their folks. And at least my experience with the director team currently, they do. And so I do think it's out there, but again, I I don't think it's wrong to look at another way to do it.
And I would just add in this case, I think this is here because employees came to their director. And this is what they want. Um, in 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 this specific instance, I I don't know the directors are out there trying, you know, advocating for this policy otherwise.
Correct. I would agree. So go ahead and bring it back next week. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So with that, we reached the end of our work session.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move we adjourn the work session.
Motion adjourn, all in favor of seeing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name. Let's have it. We are adjourned.
Council will call the meeting order for the record. It is February 7, 2023 is 6:02 PM. We will begin tonight's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Stryder, Councilman Overton, Councilwoman Perrow, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Borton, Councilman Hoagland, Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time, as a pledge of allegiance, if you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Pastor Vinnie Hankey. If you would all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity again to be with you and pray for you should begin your meeting. God, I thank you for the city that we live in. I thank you for its leadership here in this room, God, and in this building that give time and effort to serve its citizens. I pray that you would help them with wisdom and discernment to conduct their business tonight, that they would listen well, that they would speak wisely, that you would help us as citizens to be a city full of love for neighbor, seeking the good of the community. We pray protection over our servants on the front line, God, our police officers, our firefighters. Thank you for our teachers and our administrators across the school district here and ask that Meridian would be a shining light and example to the Treasure Valley. I ask these things for your glory and our good, Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
No changes for the agenda that has been published, so I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name. Guys have it and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Court, if anyone signed up under our public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, we will go into action items. First action item up is a public hearing for Jenny's Retail H 2022-0071. We will open this public hearing with staff comments from Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The applicant submitted a application for a development agreement modification to Jenny's Retail. The site consists of 1.45 acres of land and it is zoned CG located at 2365 East Fairview Avenue. The history on the property is in 2003, the property was annexed with a DA that required all future uses to be approved through this CUP process. The comprehensive plan fluid designation is mixed use community and I'll go ahead and skip down to City of Council previously approved the MDA on January 3rd. And after the hearing, staff discovered that the property did not include the entire boundary of the property that was part of the original DA. So staff met with the applicant to discuss all the options. Both staff and the applicant agreed that the best course of action was to update the staff report and renotice and reschedule the project. Staff has prepared findings and affirmative for councils approval since the project did not have any public testimony or council discussion during the previous hearings. Written testimony was only from the architect in agreement with the staff's staff report and inclusion of the DA and the provisions and staff recommends approval. And currently as of today, there is no other written testimony contesting this. And that concludes the presentation and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Stryder.
Just a quick question. When we originally approved the MDA, was there a concept plan attached then? I'm just surprised. I think I read in the staff report, we're not recommending an attachment of the concept plan to the DA.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stryder, yes, the same conceptual site plan that you'll see up here tonight is exactly what was part of that, the previous approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Stryder.
And just to be clear, I just want to make sure I understand that is staff recommending that we do include the concept plan as a part of the DA or not?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Stryder, yes, we are. And we also have added, if you see below staff's recommended changes to the development agreement, adding these two provisions and the remaining part of the development agreement stays as is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, any additional questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Looks like they are online this evening.
All right, I think I'm unmuted. Am I good?
Yes, if you can say your name and address for the record, please.
It is Matt McNulty with Chrisless Architecture, 3914 East Presidential Drive in Meridian, Idaho. Kind of just keeping it short and brief. We agree with what the staff has put forth as part of the new agreement as well as any previous conditions. We understand that there could be potential adjustments to the site plan just based on cross access agreement, but we have no concerns there.
Okay. Council, any questions for the applicant? See, no questions. This is a public testimony. Mr. Court, we have everyone's, our public hearing, did we have anyone send or provide public testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we had no one sign up in advance.
Okay, we have no one sign up. We do have staff on line. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to provide testimony on this item? Okay, seeing no one wishing to provide testimony, would the applicant like to make any final comments?
None at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Stryder.
There is no public testimony. I would move that we close a public hearing.
Second, of motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose name. Guys have it. The public hearing is closed.
After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2022-0071 as presented in today's hearing date and inclusive of the two additional conditions, the new, excuse me, the new DA provisions recommended by staff which are listed in the staff report. And then in addition, I would like to specify that we will attach the concept plan.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
A motion and second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Stryder.
Just for some context, there was a comment in the staff report, at least the version that I reviewed, that said, due to the size of the property, staff believed the inclusion of a concept plan was not warranted. So I just wanted to clear that up. That's the reason that I specified that.
Mr. Mayor, second agrees.
Any further discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Stryder.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow. Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. Thank you. Congratulations, Stacy.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Question for Mr. Mayor. Do we need to adopt the findings of facts? Yes. Item two, next.
Next up is item two on the agenda, the findings of fact conclusive law for Jenny's Retail H 2022-0071.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Stryder.
I move that we approve the findings of fact and conclusions of law under item number two.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Stryder. Overton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries and the finds of facts are agreed to. Next item up is as under ordinances, item three is ordinance number 23-20009. Well, I'll ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Meridian City Code Section 1-5-2 concerning the official newspaper of record of the city of Meridian, repealing any conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Council. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there any made it like in its entirety? Mr. Mayor.
Since we haven't had this discussion on the record, I thought I could add at least a little bit for the record. I did send some information to the council over the weekend. But basically when we switched our paper of record from the Meridian Press because there were some inconsistencies in publishing to the Idaho Press, either when we drafted it, we missed it or the codifier missed it, but they left the Meridian Press in the title, in the ordinance, along with adding the words Idaho Press. Well, you can't have both and you can only have one. And so this is just merely a cleanup, which is why I had previously presented it because it's, it felt like is pretty minor change. It's just as cleaning up to what we actually are doing, which is using the Meridian Press as our paper of record.
Thank you, Ms. Serry. Also any further comments, questions, or do I have a motion? Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Thank you, Bill, for clearing that up. I, I was wondering what was going on because I thought we had already approved the Idaho Press. I, I move that we approve ordinance number 23-2009.
Have a motion, a second to prove ordinance number 23-2009. Is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Stryder.
Aye.
Overton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Council, if you have any future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
It's not a topic, but I just, I could take a sec. Just to make note that, you know, the community that we have is led by lots of folks who serve quietly and, and we lost one last. Former council member, school district superintendent. And folks who've been around the valley for a long time and married in for a long time know Bill Donnell. It's, it's one of the funniest, goofiest, kindest, all- It's, it's one of the funniest, goofiest, kindest, all heart servants. One is to rotary the chamber. He just gave tirelessly, so he's not having a service. His request, which is classic Bill, wouldn't put attention to himself ever, so to his wife Christine and the entire Donnell family. It's a big loss for our community, so.
Thank you, Councilman Borton.
Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move we adjourn our regular meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Guys have it, we are adjourned.